Idea of how they will operate with these thirty percent cuts, really what will happen is chaos is a pretty good word during that week time because we have no idea what the cuts are going to be, absolutely no idea until town meeting floor and once they're voted, that's what they become. So I just want to, as a reminder, while people are listening to these nice presentations, department has done a good job on, to remember that although they may be able to say this is how we'll get by with a thirty percent cut, they may have a fifty percent cut or a sixty percent cut that they are dealing with in their particular department.
Again, I'm one of the guys in the cut. I work eleven seven overnight shift with a couple of the side of sports and Brandon Hamid on the front of sports, so I was helping cut one of the senior guys. Brandon's been in the cut multiple times, it's been three, four o'clock in the morning, and it takes us three minutes to respond to a house from out of a call. We always go, ambulance guys in the middle of the night, they're asleep, it takes about five minutes to wake up, take the ambulance, and then they have to drive the truck from Templeton Center down Lower Road or, you know, down Berry Road or, say, just this past winter at three o'clock in the morning, we had met up a call on Depot Road and an array of trailer wheel drive Crown Vic in Snowstorm wasn't going very well, but it was a cemetery truck that came and plowed the actual driveway of the house so that we can get there and so that the ambulance can get in there. And, you know, three o'clock in the morning, you're all asleep, you don't think about it, when you dial nine one one and somebody says nobody's coming, can we totally do that thing?
Good point.
Gee, I'm sorry, can you pass that over? Did you bring something?
Um, no, I didn't.
Did I miss something?
I didn't bring out the dollar sheet when I was here last night, just got a few of a general overview of the cuts, I gave you one of those.
Thank you.
Do I understand this correctly? We have roughly a half million dollars in uncollected taxes?
Yep.
And the override's about a half million dollars?
Yep.
And why don't we just take all the properties and taxes and sell them for the, at two and a half percent, that represents twenty million dollars worth of property? You could easily not have the override and fund everything.
That would work in the private sector, but not in the public sector.
Why is that?
It's like when you have free cash at the end of the fiscal year, you can't put your hands on that money that year. You have to wait till the next year, which, you know, it's a heck of a thing to have a hundred thousand dollars sitting on the table that you can't touch until the next year. And that's the rules of municipalities, that's the state.
But it still represents twenty million dollars.
No. It, it doesn't matter what it, it's not going to solve this problem right now.
No, it's not going to solve it now, but it will solve it in the future and...
There are a lot of things that are being looked at and it, some of them, they're not going to amount to, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, but it will make things a little more efficient and save a little more money.
And also...
The override, the override is the here and now. It's, you know, this has to be done one way or another. It doesn't matter how much...
How many times have you tried to override and failed?
If it fails, then what you've just...
How many times have you tried to override a property?
Three.
Three, and it failed all three times?
For the school twice. So this is the first time that, that our, that police will be on the line, fire will be on the line if it fails.
Okay. So pursuing that twenty million dollars is worth it, isn't it? Because you, you already tried to do a override and afford and fail, and here you are trying to do it again. They say that that's not to solve the problem today, so we're not going to worry about tomorrow's problem? That's why you have the problem, because you're not worrying about tomorrow's problem today?
We are worried about them, but there's, it really does not make sense to pursue something right now, to put a lot of effort into it and put people's attention on that particular item when it's not going to solve the immediate problem. And the immediate problem is, we have a bill that came about by the joint town meeting vote. And now we have to pay, come up with a way to pay that bill.
What are you going to do if it fails?
Is collecting, is collecting bad taxes a good thing to do? Yes, it is.
What are you going to do if it fails though? You're, you're going to have the same problem, right? If it fails?
If it fails, we're going to do what we have, what you've heard tonight, the cuts in the budget.
And are you going to then pursue that twenty million dollars worth of assets?
Of course, Dan, what?
When people don't pay their taxes after a fashion that goes into what's called tax title, the treasurer is responsible for tax title. I'm your treasurer. I'm not sure where you're getting twenty million, but what I said to you was, I, you're guessing that the value of the properties would be twenty million dollars.
But two and a half percent, if there's two and a half, if the half million in dealing with taxes represents two and a half percent of the value, then I can extrapolate that out of the twenty million dollars worth of...
So what happens is, in a case that somebody, collectively, there's a half million dollars out there.
Correct.
So, so if there's a property, if I may just briefly, if there's a property that's out there and we decide, okay, we're going to take the property and sell it, so the person owes, pick a number, a hundred thousand dollars for taxes, that's very high, I don't think I have any. The only one that I have that's like that is an industry. So fifty grand. And rather than take a home for fifty thousand dollars and sell it for a hundred and fifty, someone's going to come up with fifty. But the process to get to that point, right? So we're never going to see twenty million. That's not realistic, it's not what's going to happen. The process that gets us to the, to the, to the fifty thousand is, there is a process that gets there. And in the past, there've been a lot of changes in the treasurer's department over the past year, and when they had the last cut, the twelve and a half percent, they cut the assistant to the point where something had to give, and the thing they gave was tax title, because it's less immediate than many of the other things that need to be cared for in the treasurer's department. That's not to say that it's unimportant, unimportant. It's just that's one of the things that we could put aside until we did some other work, the necessary immediate work, paying the bills, doing the, paying bonds and stuff, debt, taxes and payroll, for example. We get, we've made some progress on that, and we're getting to approaching the point where we can begin to tackle some of these tax title issues. Not going to happen if we cut the budget. Cut the budget, not going to happen.
It, well, this is what it sounds like to me. Almost sounds like you're saying, we're not going, we're going to ignore the solution because it's too hard to do or...
No, we don't, there's no...
It's not immediate enough, so we won't do it.
No staff to do it.
Like, walk on the road, you won't always have to stop. So you're looking snow on the road.
I mean...
Even if there's nobody to do what you want them to do, so it won't affect them.
And we also have a surplus of vacant homes already in town, so how real estate works is prices are based on, you know, it's supply and demand like everything else. So if we have a hundred tax titles, if we, I don't think we have that many, but maybe we do, who knows? If we have a hundred tax titles, we foreclose on all those tax titles, some are vacant already, some have families in them, we, if I can finish, we kick those families, we kick those families out or those seniors out for not paying their taxes.
Foreclose on all the ones that sit in the empty?
We, we can't discriminate and say that we're going to go against this house, or we like this nice older couple, so we're not going to kick them out of their house, but this other one, we can't discriminate. I mean, it's, it, you, if you're going to process them, you're going to process them. The foreclosure process is expensive, trust me, because I charge for them every day. It's expensive to do foreclosures. The title that you get coming out of tax title isn't even good for a year, and you have to go to court. So if you foreclose on a two hundred thousand dollar house, you're going to be lucky if you get forty, fifty grand for it because of the legal work that the person who buys that house is going to put into it. So the people that are going to be buying these houses are not people that are going to move right in and start paying the, the property taxes on these. And also what you do by kicking those out is you create more vacant homes, which then lowers the value of all of the property that's in town anyway, further bringing down, actually increasing the tax burden on everyone else.
Your assessment will drop, and then you collect less money, unless you raise the tax rate way up.
Probably have to go down too. Somebody would rather buy a house than a bar, if the town has a twenty-four hour police department and a town that throws it if you plow, then they don't have a town that, would you rather live? Or assuming they have all that or...
Well, it takes time and it takes money to do tax title and leads. We don't have time and we don't have the money. So if we focused our attention on going after tax titles, we're just digging the hole deeper that we're in right now.
That's correct.
Dave?
I think it's probably fair to say that some of these properties, especially the industrial ones that are pulling a lot of back taxes, is something we don't want to get involved. And that's probably why they're sitting in, because they're either polluted or cost more to get your hands on, and then you're stuck with the...
But yes, we do, we do intend to, to go after back property taxes as, as much as possible, because that is, you know, revenue loss, but the process is not easy, it's long, and it doesn't always benefit you as financially as, as you may think, because I don't care what you have, a car, a house, a boat, you can think it's worth a million dollars, it's only worth what somebody is going to pay you for it. And if nobody wants to pay you what you asked for it, then it sits empty, and it, it does not, it does not solve anything. So we've seen, we've heard from the departments, we've seen a couple employees, one, two, three, who have eliminated, next to their name, they will be gone if the override fails and the cuts have to be done and the services lost. And as I said, I have this printout, and I did it just for, just numbers, for, just to give you an idea, I believe the average home value in town is a hundred and sixty-five thousand or so, pretty sure. So on a house that's assessed at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, the cost of the override would be a hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents, and that would be an additional forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents per quarter. If you have a house at three hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, that would be an increase of three hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents, or ninety-one dollars and eight cents a quarter. On a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollar house, that would be an additional a hundred and twenty dollars and forty-one cents, or thirty dollars a quarter. Again, this was put together by the assessor. I printed it out just to bring to these town hall meetings, just to, to give examples of home values. Again, as I said, if anybody wants that, you know, my computer or whatever, if you want to look at it, you can. And something that I think it's important to remember, the, the previous overrides, and as the question was just brought up, it, they were, the argument, the discussion, they have a lot, it was, you know, the school, the school, the school. And yes, most of the override would go to pay the increased assessment for the school budget, but the cost of not paying that bill through an override now is, it's more about the town than the school. As you've seen and heard, people lost, services lost, and townspeople will suffer. No, it's not a nice thing to do when nobody likes to pay, you know, more taxes, and it will, it will be hard and difficult, I'm sure, for, for some people. But I think it would be harder and more difficult if you need that ambulance, if you need that police officer, if you need to get to the pharmacist for a prescription, if you need to get to a doctor's appointment and you look out your window and, my road's not plowed, and you call and nobody answers the phone, or someone says, yeah, they're going to get there maybe tomorrow sometime, you know, what do you do? You go out, you try to drive, you make it to the hospital, you try to go to the doctors, you try to go wherever, you get stuck, you get in an accident, there again, you call and nobody's coming. And I've already been, I've already been slapped by my mom for putting it out, so I'll say it again. I have never had to call an ambulance, I've, I've never had to do that for myself or anyone, I've never had to make that call. My mom was at a doctor's appointment just down the street from here, she is one of those cardiac patients, she has a heart condition. While she was visiting the doctor there, something happened and they called the ambulance, and she was taken to the hospital to meet with her cardiologist by the Templeton Ambulance Service. So I do have, you know, a, a personal connection that that ambulance service is a valuable thing to have, especially now, it's, it's staffed, there, there's somebody there during the days, if you call, you don't have to wait for, you know, somebody to call, somebody to see if they're home, see if anybody's been, we have the people there on duty now, which equates to faster response time and better service. And again, it's, if you've never needed them, you say, oh, well, you know, we can do without the police, but what about that? When it comes time that you need them and you call and we're sorry, we'll be there at ten AM. Well, you know, I need the damn police officer now, not at ten AM, what do you do? On another thing, it, the schools, the very, the very reason we need the override is for the school. The Templeton Highway Department plows the schools out. He's low staffed, I'm here to tell you that, as a selectman, my point of view is, the schools' parking lots will have to come second, because the town of Templeton citizens' roads will have to come first. Templeton School will get to you when we get to you. The residents got to come first, they pay the bills. But, 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 but heck, if the roads aren't plowed, the buses aren't going to get there anyways. And if the roads aren't getting plowed in time, well, you won't be school anyway. And if you call that police officer and the road's not plowed, maybe they get there, maybe they don't. Will they get in the wreck why they're trying to get there? Because the road couldn't be plowed because it doesn't have the people, he's plowing on the other side of town, when you need a police officer and ambulance over here. Again, asking for a tax increase and, and voting to raise your taxes on yourself, I know it's, it's not a fun thing, and for some people, I, I know it'll be very hard and very difficult, but the cost of not doing it, I think, is greater and, and more of a hardship on, on probably the very people who will have the hardest time paying the tax increase. And it's like a, a bad circle, but if life was easy. And on that note, does, are there any comments or questions from people? Yes?
Question. For those of us who are in support of the override, you have talked about the money, there's extra money in the override. Is that going to go to some of the departments who, who lost that twelve and a half percent? I know the selectmen aren't getting any salaries and other members of certain committees aren't getting paid snipens and that sort of thing. What is going to be reinstated with that money?
The, the six hundred twenty thousand would pay the increased assessment of five hundred fifty-one thousand and some change. There's a small amount in there to actually pay for the annual town meeting and the ballot election, because with three precincts now, it's around five thousand dollars, and it, several that we've had wasn't really budgeted for. And the other money, no, it's not going for the elected people to get salaries, it's going to give the hours back, to give some hours back for the employees, so their wages will go back to what they were for the most part prior to two thousand and twelve. Again, and that doesn't necessarily mean we would go back to officers being open Monday through Friday, but Monday through Thursday, I think, is my opinion, and we would, you know, that would be voted on. Maybe longer hours, you know, more hours than those days, especially like the town clerk, is she stays late on Monday, so people get out of work, it does no good to be open five days a week if they close up at three and you don't get home from work until five. Maybe, you know, maybe one day a week, you know, officers could be open like till six or something. So they get their hours back and get some of that money that they lost. I mean, no raises plus you take hours, which equates to money, and we've lost two employees. You know, and I, I said, I, I certainly don't blame them for going somewhere else for a, a better wage and a, a better stable, we don't, we're going to worry about an override again, override again, override again. They're never going to do it, we ain't never, you know. And Alan Mayo, he's at his top step in his pay grade. How do you move him up to another grade in the middle of the step process? So one, if you move him up the next grade and you start him right at the beginning, he loses money. And you want to put him in the middle so he has a way to progress and he doesn't lose money, or you have to have the funding to do that. But yes, the extra money would go to, for the, the employees to give, move them back as close as possible to, prior to two thousand and twelve. So in a sense, they're getting some, they're getting money back, they're not getting a raise per se, but yeah, but no, it's no money for elected people to get paid, which I'm not in favor of. I know I'm in the minority, but I'm just not in favor of that. Yes?
Anything that's decided, if the override fails, we have a special town meeting, it's scheduled whether the override passes or fails. If the override passes, then there will be recommendations on what to do with that money for town meeting, and everyone who attends that town meeting votes where that money goes. So it's not like the selectman can control it and move it around. It has to be done at a town meeting with town meeting vote.
That's the intent of the, of the amount. Yes?
I have a question. I, I have two things to say. First of all, how do we know that we won't be back here next year from the school committee once more?
We don't.
Have you been guaranteed that they won't ask us for another five hundred thousand dollars in this year or two years?
Have not asked for that guarantee and would not expect to hear it. And no, we, there's no way of knowing, and as we have found out, and it's not unique to Templeton, there's a, an East Brookfield and Spencer, it's a two districts, they're going, it's, it's one of nine or ten, it's, it's an out of control mechanism that I've...
Second, I have to say that we have utilized everybody here, because we had a truck go through us a few years back, and we had an elderly man and his wife playing unconscious on the front lawn, and everybody came inside of two minutes. We can't thank people enough, the police department, the highway department, the ambulance, the fire department, everybody came, and it was absolutely fantastic. When I called, I was in a panic, and I just said to the dispatcher, I said, send everyone, there's a truck in my bedroom. And there was, and they had to jack the house up so that they could get the truck out. And it was just absolutely fantastic, I can't thank everybody enough, and I will never be able to thank you for, it was just an awful, awful incident. And luckily, the man and his wife, they, he, it was a medical crisis with him, and they rushed him to the hospital and he had surgery, and they were both fine. But you just never know what's going to happen in your life, and we need every single person that, on our departments, we can't let anybody go. And secondly, three weeks after Dana Blaze finished reconstructing the house, our house was robbed, and I had to call again, and the police came, and it was absolutely fantastic. And the people that you're going to get rid of, they were there for us. And it was unbelievable, and it was found that it was a career criminal who was living in Templeton that robbed us, and robbed many other houses, but ours was the only house that he left DNA, blood in. So after a very lengthy investigation, they caught him, and we had to go to court, and that's when it came out that he had moved to Templeton, because he had started robbing in Boston, and he was working his way through the state, and he was residing in Templeton and robbing houses. So he, he's now a robber, but I can't thank our police enough. It was a horrible investigation, I mean, we had to go to court three different times, but Derek Hall was just fantastic, and, and Ryan, Eric, everyone, they, they just did so much for us that it was a, we can't let them go, we just can't let anybody in this town go. We're going to need them, I hope someday.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I've got just two things, I can't touch her story, but I, I feel for her when she asks about us getting an, an okay that the school won't want no money, and after coming through the budget, you can look at this figure and that figure, but we all have the same costs, like health insurance. Their, their health insurance went up over two hundred grand in one year. That just doesn't come out of, you know, out of the desk somewhere to make up that, that amount. So can they tell us the same budget next year? I don't think so, nobody can. And the, and the other thing is, on, on the amount that we're going to be paying, if we vote this override in, it'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand more than we paid last year overall, because last year we had a five hundred thousand dollar debt exclusion in tax assessment that we put up for the seniors. If you take the five hundred thousand off from the six twenty you want, you're actually at one twenty with the two and a half percent more for the, for the overrun, more than just the override. So if we want to look at it, if so, we're looking to get six hundred and twenty thousand more, it's only a hundred and twenty more than the five hundred thousand that we okayed last year. It would be permanent, but to say that we need to come up with that amount, it's kind of misleading, so to speak.
So I promised you the last time I talked. One thing too that I want to make clear, and this gives me a lot of anxiety, is that, so I know that there was a, as the chairman said, can call it discussion, argument, heated debate about the school. So what, I know that obviously you who are all here and watching it on TV are trying to keep informed of what's going on. My concern is that people have maybe formulated this opinion, oh, the school doesn't need any more money. By law, when we put on that ballot what the money is going to pay for, it will say that it's going to, correct, go for the school's increased assessment, you know, and town services. I am concerned that people will look at that and say, oh no, I don't think the school needs that money, and vote no on the override, not understanding that the school is getting that increased assessment, whether we vote for the override or not. It's just whether we can use the override to pay for it, or we have to use money that's we have already allocated in our budget. So when you talk to your neighbors and friends that live in Templeton, please make it clear to them that the money, while it is going to pay the school's assessment, the school is getting that assessment from the town, and even though it says, pay, you know, Nairgansett Regional School District assessment on that override, that money will be used to keep jobs of, of our fire and our police and our town employees. Because I, that, that's something about the override that, that makes me the most nervous, is that people will see that wording and think, oh, I'm voting no on the school budget, and so they just put no, not realizing what that, what the consequences are.
I can tell you after talking to two of the people in the last week and a half, that is exactly what they think.
And that's what, yeah, that's what makes me nervous.
And so far, it's been a very negative aspect here in town.
Dan?
Well, don't you suppose because there is no one here except the two of us tonight, they've already made up their mind, they're not going to come and listen to anything? They're all no.
More showing.
They need, this is a very poor show.
It doesn't mean that we need to see this new people.
So I promise.
I can, I can speak to that. At the joint town meeting, it was one of the selectmen that was not up on the stage being a leader, of course, according to some people, but sitting in the audience, talking to the group that was around me, I hear things that you don't hear up on the stage, and that was, a lot of people had gone there with their minds made up, because how, how long are they going to talk? How, how much are we going to have to listen to? Just give us an amount, let us vote on. People have gone, gone there with either a yes or a no vote already, you know, in their mind. And the, the number of people at these three meetings like this that we've had has been very small, and there's seen some new people come and go, but it's the number wise, it, it's been a very small number, unfortunately.
Well, if you were to publish your list of saying how much your tax rate is going to go up, what it's going to cost over the four payments, that might help. In there, everybody can look at your paper and go around and find their tax bill, because they should have one still sitting in their drawer, because it'd be paid with number first. And then, oh, okay, well... oh, okay, well, you know, that is going to amount to more than I wanna pay, but maybe it's not gonna be as bad as I expect.
On that note, there was an ad in the Gardener News on Saturday about this meeting. It was on page two. Can I have a show of hands how many people saw that ad? I paid to put it in the paper, and I just wanted to see how many people actually, actually saw it. And I did, I paid for that out of my pocket to advertise this, because the town really, it's a slippery thing to walk down. But I just, it's to get the word out to see, to try to get more people to come here. And I was just curious how many people actually saw the ad. So.
I put ads in the paper and I say, mention this ad. If you can, we send out your service. Is that how many I have?
Yeah, it's, I don't know, maybe I should get on that Facebook thing. Somebody show me how to do that.
But they tell the way I'm on Facebook. And that's where you're gonna fight.
And that's why I'm hard on Facebook. All right, Dan?
Yeah. I just wanna make two points. One is, of course, with, this is gonna be a hardship on some people, no matter what. If it passes, it's gonna be a hardship. The town does have provisions through the assessors to provide some relief for individuals who are unable to pay, provided they meet certain criteria. And there's a variety of different programs. So if anybody believes that they might qualify, or even if you're not sure, you should contact the assessors to find out whether or not you can get some relief on your taxes. That's point one. Second point, I heard somebody, a lady mentioned, what if the school asks for more money next year? Of course, there's no certainties. But I'd like to express that, if the school had not asked for this override, or this money, to raise their budget this year, the town was on a path to require an override anyway. This override's not gonna fix Templeton's problems. It's gonna stave it off for a few years. And the town will have, and we wanna thrive, instead of just flimp along, we're gonna need more of an override. Now, this probably not what I probably should be saying right now, but that's the fact. I don't want people to think that if they go and vote this override, all of our problems are solved. Cause that's not the case.
So what are they going to do to prevent this from just being a temporary mandate?
My hope, my hope is that if this override passes, people will be able to appreciate the, what they're getting for their dollars, and their, you know, for their tax dollars, what they actually get for it. And if we can convince them that they can get even more, that the value that they're getting out of the town is worth what they're paying, then, then they'll, a proposal five years down the road or something for another override might survive. And one of the ways that I propose that we do that is ask people to take that tax bill, and then take all the utility bills, the heating bills, their rubbish removal, things like that, total those all up. And see which pile is the bigger, what costs more money and what you get for it. And I propose that you would see that you're getting a lot for your property tax dollars.
I save a lot of money just getting Dunkin' Donuts twice a week.
There you go.
Yes, and then, right?
I just wanted to make a comment. Some of you may or may not know that I am a school committee member. And I just wanted to let you guys know that it's very discouraging to have this blame game with the town and thus blaming the school and the school committee members. I am a elected official, and I am constantly feeling ashamed that, or made to feel ashamed of the support that I give to the school district after I was elected to do so. Just as you are elected to be a selectman of the town, you are supposed to do the best for our town. And I don't appreciate anybody's comments, whether they're spoken or online, or threats, or negative comments that, that make me feel ashamed, or that I, that we did the wrong thing. It's extremely difficult for us to be in the position that we're in. And with everybody standing up and saying, you know, all the cuts that are gonna be made, if you would like us, we could bring all of our teachers every year and our staff that we're gonna have to cut. Some of them are also have family and houses in this town, and it's gonna affect them. And we could do the same thing, but we don't. I am in support of this override. No, you should've done this many years ago, because this town has needed this money. And I was not in favor of the cuts that was made last year. It was a horrible decision. And I understand that there's people that can't afford it. And I don't know what to tell you, but we, this town just is in a rut. And my biggest, I guess, complaint is the negativity. There's no sense of community when you're fighting one committee against another. The town officials, or the elected officials on the town of Templeton side, we're all community members. We all have family in this town. And believe it or not, we do feel for the taxpayer. We feel for, we, we have to look at both sides. And I don't think any of you think that. You think that we only think of the school, and we don't think of anyone else. And that's not true. It's not true for me, anyway. I can't speak for everybody. But I, I'm, I'm sick of feeling ashamed, and I'm sick of being talked about behind my back. So I just wanna put it out there.
Thank you. Great?
I have a question. Is there a shelf life on the override?
The override is, a tax override is forever. The first year of the override, that money has to go for the reasons given? Like it, shall the town be allowed to assess six hundred and twenty?
Does that mean in the future, we can't hold it back?
Six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, dah dah dah. Can you re, do a reduction? Yes, you can. And if you, you go through the DOR website, online, it, it shows, it tells about the process. But why would you wanna, if you were really an excess, if you were really fat, you know, money wise, you would. But personally, I believe that Templeton was amiss in the, at least the last ten years by not having small overrides every year or every other year. Two and a half percent, to, to keep up, because you're only allowed to automatically go up two and a half percent. If inflation's automatically, you know, it's three and a half, four percent, you're behind the ballgame, not, not even thinking about health insurance and pensions. You know, public sector unions have one of, since the middle of the nineties, was one of the fastest growing, they grew faster than the private sector, because for so many years, they, wages had been so low in the public sector. The thing was, you had benefits and you had like a guaranteed job. And then the public sector unions decided, we're gonna get our wages up with the rest of the private, the private sector. And they went up. And now you have the pension liabilities that, you know, you have to meet. And you're under the confines of two and a half percent override. If the, the school budget went up one point nine percent, right? Our budget only went up, we can only go up automatically two and a half percent without an override. So basically, two percent covers the increase of the one point nine percent budget in the, the school. So we got a five percent, a point five percent, a half of one percent, you know, property tax increase. The health insurance goes up, you know, we're behind. And then the following year, you just fall farther and farther and farther behind, which is why I believe it was a great disservice to the town of Templeton, to the taxpayers over these last years, when, you know, the balanced budget, no tax increase and no layoffs. And you're using your stabilization and savings and moving money around from here to here to pay the last minute, meet your last minute bills, at the last minute, your pension, with the county retirement system that you have to meet. You, you just, it's unsustainable to do that. And now, like Dan said, this override, it's not gonna fix the salary and the, keeping the people that already work here at, in minimum levels that we have. It, it's not gonna fix that. It's just gonna try to...
So we have a really big problem, then, because like you said, trying to...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a huge problem. As I said in a, a letter to the editor that I wrote, my, I, my thought was, we needed at least a million dollar override. And I know, you know, I don't have a chance in hell to pass it, but that's just my personal opinion, what we needed to, to catch up, to get to a place. But, but yes, the override, the override is, for the first year, the money has to go where the ballot says it goes. And after that, it goes into the general fund. And, you know, logically, it should just continue to, to go towards the school budget and for the hours for the employees. But there's no law that says you can't just, you know, move it anywhere. What's that?
Are we taking suggestions?
As far, yeah, you can make one.
Okay. Abraham Lincoln instituted a program where any citizen could save the government X amount of money, didn't matter what the amount was, that, that citizen would get half of it. Figuring, even if we're giving some of it away, we're saving some too. In the long run, we're gonna save more than we pay out. The thing with budgets, you know, you talk about services and necessities and things like that, but, you know, a lot of times, people just can't cut the budget until they're forced to. It happens in business all the time. Maybe if people were allowed to make suggestions, that would be money-saving to the town, and get a reward for it, like say, at that amount that they saved the town, you would reduce their taxes by that amount. So the suggestions would start pouring in. Now, when Abraham Lincoln instituted that program, the country started saving a lot of money. It's not such a bad program, because you're not giving anything away that you didn't already save. And you're saving more than what you're giving away. And you could have it like a, you know, a one-time deal where you save it on your taxes, but you have incentive to help the town save money, which alleviates some of the problems.
It's, believe it or not, you're not the first individual to say that to me, to, to me to bring that idea forward. It's just the process again, because of...
Well, yeah, but we agree that this is a long-term problem because it is unsustainable. So maybe we need an immediate solution right now, but we should also start looking for longer-term solutions. Or, like you said, we'll always be here, and we'll always be doing that. It was a shame that we didn't have little overrides over the last ten years. What's a shame that we don't start looking for solutions like that now, even if they are longer-term solutions?
All right, someone else had their hand up?
I'm glad to. I, I talked to a lot of people, and I can totally relate to Mrs. Mattson and what she is saying. I'm a strong supporter of the school, and I've lived in this community for a long time. Again, I, I work with so many of you. I volunteer. I love my community. I, it's a shame to see that we're here. It would've been much more informative and nice to say some of these things while the school was going through this. We have needed an override, and we have needed to catch up. And last year was a complete disaster at town meeting. We had to say, I'm laying you off, I'm laying you off. It was horrible. You know, so that's, that's just my feeling on that. I think a lot of people have said to me that they don't wanna vote for the override, because they feel like we don't have any long-term goals. What's, what's the game plan? What's the, so we vote this in once, and, I mean, that's really what I'm hearing in the street. I don't, I don't know what to say. Is the school gonna come and ask for more money? Exactly what you just said. Your health insurance goes up, mine goes up, the schools goes up, lots of teachers got let go, they don't have a job. I don't wanna see the same thing happen again. Safety is critical. And, you know, as far as the plowing goes, that seems like a dig. I'll speak that out loud. The safety of every citizen in this community is very important. We have kids walking in the street. Just because it storms doesn't mean we're not gonna have school. So however the school chooses to handle that, that will have to be the case. I just think that it would be much better for us to come together sooner, talk about budgets, be together, you know, look at them. I think that you'd have more people looking at things now, which is way more than before. I'm an online girl. I don't always read the newspaper. I think I did see that list published. Maybe it needs to be published somewhere else. Maybe, I mean, we need to make front page news here, not always the negativity, some positivity in this town. I'm a real estate agent, and I would like to comment on what you said. There are currently forty-two single-family homes on the market. Fifteen of them came since the school got their budget, and they're concerned. You know, it's not, I don't think that people wanna not pay more taxes, it's that they're concerned about the environment here. Only fifteen homes are under agreement. There's a lot more selling than are, that are just, I see it every day. It's hurting my job. I mean, I'm self-employed. I don't, I don't have any benefits. I don't have any, when my taxes go up, I might not get paid. And if I'm not selling anything, so I'm, I have stronger, deep-rooted concern about what's happening here. If we don't get this override, just what Mr. Billy Osterberg says, people are gonna leave. They're not gonna feel safe. You know, I understand that the elderly and the senior of this town, they, they brought us here. Good, 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 good stuff. So they paid for my education. For that, I'm grateful, and it's our time to pay it forward. Period. That's how I feel about that.
On a note, and nobody was here, and we never brought it up, but the library, the Templeton library, it's, it's a small little library. It's, I mean, let's face it, it's, the resources are very limited. One thing it does do, though, the Templeton Center School, the students can still, they still be taken over there and be introduced to the library. But it, they will get budget cuts, just like everyone else, if, if it's voted. And the possibility is that they could lose their certification, which means I can no longer take my library card and go to Gardner and check out books. And it's, it would be a hard thing to get back, once it's lost. I'll, you know, whatever you think about, you know, even my mother reads stuff on the nook. But I still think it's important, well, I'm, sorry, I'm technology challenged. But it's still important, I think, to maintain that certification and to have a library, because it allows you to go and use other resources. It also speaks to, I think, the commitment of the community to educate its people, especially the younger ones. I think it's still important for kids to stick their face in a book every once in a while and read, rather than do everything on a computer and the smartphones and what have you. And I know they're into it, and I know they like it, but, and you see it now, they do everything like shorthand, you know, two for two, and they, they're losing spelling and language skills. And I think if they're introduced, at least for a while, if they're introduced to books and they have access to it, maybe that won't be lost. Because, you know, you, you still, you go to college, I don't care, you do stuff online, you still have to be able to read. You have to be able to proofread stuff, cause when you hand it in. So anyway, that's another thing, that's a possibility. If the override fails, is the staffing at the library, the library hours and everything will be, will be cut. And the certification, and then kids who wanna take, go to another library and use it, they won't be able to. And on a note from the school, on the school, I, I got something in the mail the other day, three days ago. It was, when they had cross-country signup, I ran cross-country when I was at Narragansett way back when. And it's the only sport I, I participated in. And when they were having signups and stuff, I came over, I talked to the coaches, I saw some of the students sign up. I asked a few of them, you know, the, the fee to participate. I asked a few of them, you know, the, the fee to participate, you know, how that was going to affect them, and this and that. And, uh, the result of that, I got a, I was, I was really surprised, because usually you get things by, nowadays, you get things by email. I got a card in the mail saying, thank you for your time. Uh, it was signed by the coaches, uh, and the people who, the kid, the kids who were, uh, taking part, uh, in, in cross-country. I was surprised, uh, that I got, that I, I got something, because I didn't, it wasn't that big of a deal. But I, I was surprised, I got a card, and it was signed, and it was a thank-you card. And I think that speaks to the character of the kids, uh, over here. Because like I said, uh, you know, people say thank you nowadays, they, they send a text or, or an email, you know, hey, nice meeting you, thanks for having me over. I, I actually got a card, they actually signed and, and sent it to me, and, uh, I thought that was, I thought that was pretty cool. So, you know, we do have some kids over here at the school, and, uh, and back to the resource officer. One of the things I think that's important for is, uh, not, not from a police standpoint, from the crime standpoint, from preventing this drugs, because you're never going to stop all of that. I don't, you could have ten cops over here. What it does do, it introduces the kids to a police officer. And they learn, uh, from that individually, at least I believe they do, that, hey, guys in blue, they're not bad guys. They're not allowed out just to get me, and, you know, they're just regular guys, they're regular people. And they're, they're over here talking to us, taking the time to talk to us. And of course, one thing that can happen from that is, maybe the kid knows something that's going on, sees something bad. On the other side, maybe there's something going on at home or in school, and he doesn't, I can't talk to him, I can't tell mom or dad that. I can't tell my sister that. Uh, I can't tell the teacher this. Maybe they can tell that officer, you know, I, I, hey, that cop, uh, Mr., you know, whoever, he, he's a pretty cool guy, I, I'll talk to him. And, and maybe that helps out one kid. And that resource officer helping out, you know, if it's a serious thing, helps out that one kid. That was worth every penny that officer was paid to be in his school. And I think that's, you know, things like that are sometimes lost, when you get talking about money. So I hope, uh, I hope this was informative, I hope, uh, you can pass it on. And the suggestion about getting the dollar amounts for the property tax, you, uh, reminder that, that you can go to the assessor's office and get a re, a reduction in your, uh, an abatement on your property taxes. You senior citizen, and you have, you know, uh, your unlimited income. And I know some people, everybody's on a fixed income, you work, this many hours, you get paid this, but, uh, the ones who don't have the opportunity to, uh, you know, yeah, you get a two percent increase in your social security, and you get three percent increase in your Medicare, which you've got to pay out, so you don't really get anything. So I hope this was, uh, informative. I hope, uh, like you said, you, you actually used all these services, you, you use these people. Please let your friends know, uh, that this, this override is, is, it's not for the school, it's for the town. And it's for the, the people that work for you. I don't know if we're going to have another one of these. Depends on the booking and the time. But, um.
Can I just mention something?
Yes.
Gansett Greatness, or anyone else, um, who wants to, we're having, um, standouts this weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, um, on the Templeton Common. We're going to make signs and hold them up, do the same thing, um, that we did before, and support up the town. And I think, um, do you know the times, I'm sorry?
Ten to one on Saturday and twelve to three.
So ten to one and twelve to three. So anybody who can come, um, we, I, we would love it if, if, if you could come and stand to come with us. Any, fire department, please, firemen. You can. No, you don't have to change your hair. Just a dirty thing. But it would just show some humility, um, within our community, um, that we all stand, um, for this, and that we all, um, support one another.
Isn't the town website?
There is.
What about doing something, you know, when you get the emergency calls, about, or the political call, about, is there something with the town? Just like with the schools.
Oh, connected.
You know, that you can put something out there and say, listen, this is why this bug's important to the town, and as far as building a community, just a quick, concise little thing that says, this isn't just about schools, it's not just about our medical services. This is about growing our town and growing our community and keeping our services. Making it more precise and not about one of the problems, and not maybe tip us, the town being the last that's around.
It would, it's a good idea, and it would have to be a volunteer effort, because currently, we can't afford to pay for that. Yes.
Was that in the light department?
I already asked about that, and, um, it was, uh, I know, because they do not do, um, their own billing anymore. I spoke with Chief Whitaker about a week ago, and I told him that we would help him, um, do a flyer, could we do a mailer? Um, to be honest with you, uh, he wants to do a mailer, he reached out to me and asked me to send an email to all of Gansett Greatness. They're looking for some donations to do, um, that mailer, so if anybody could give a dollar, um, or five dollars, then we could get that. So I wanted to know if the chief was coming, so I did talk to him.
This, this is, uh, going to be mailed out.
This one?
Right here. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Very cool. It, it has to be, if the.
Oh, okay, he had, good, okay.
Between the Templeton Police Union, the Templeton Highway Union, and the Templeton Fire Department Association.
Okay, he had me reach out, he was speaking down there, let me know that. So I was trying to help coordinate that effort, but I'm, I'm happy that that's, um, been done.
Dave.
Um, Gansett Greatness, or your group, um, there's a yard sale of that, at the old school in East Templeton, that may be replaced today.
Yeah, the Council on Aging is having a yard sale at East Templeton, at the old school.
I think it's running from, um, it starts at nine.
Is that this end?
Yeah.
I'll be on the cake, dang it. I guess just a couple I got left to do.
So, yes.
Does it cost money to call school up?
You mean, like, for snow days and things?
For snow day. Does it cost the town money?
Don't think it costs the money, only if, if you take so many, then they have to make those days up, so.
Well, I just ask, because a couple of times last year, you guys called off school, didn't even snow.
We don't do that.
We don't do that.
We don't do that. You blame for everything, but that's not us.
I wasn't even in the countryside, nothing to do with that.
Totally not us.
When I was a kid, you didn't call school up, you had at least four to six inches on, on the ground, or around.
And we walked uphill to get there, we had to take a bus. The rules have changed, unfortunately, the rules have changed. We, we as parents, saying, I'm going out by car.
You know, you make the snow, one or three, to three inches, and then you call up.
When I went to school, we walked uphill both ways.
Yeah, you know, feel the bear, you get your sleep.
So on, on that note, uh, I thank you all for coming, I thank you for your interest.
Did the superintendent know about maybe using our connected system to get a hold of parents in the district?
I, I think that she was already, um, planning on that, um, to put out a connected, and we're also, um, having a block party on the same day as voting. And we, uh, Gansett Greatness are going to have a table to encourage people, did you go vote? Did you go, it's, it's a way to bring it together and to get people here.
So, uh, I thank all of you for coming and your interest, and please inform your friends that, uh, this, this needs to happen for the town, it's, don't, it's not about the student.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. I say that to the payers, but dang.